Don't get nervous, Frank. Don't get nervous.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the March 18th, 2019 Crest Hill City Council Meeting to order. If everyone would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. We do have several special guests in the audience this evening. The young gentleman from the Demolay Organization, so I am going to ask that they lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Roll call, please, Jen.
Ray Salomon.
Here.
Vicki Hackney. Glenn Conklin.
Present.
Scott Dyke.
Here.
John Verchey.
Here.
Bob Scoler.
Here.
Claudia Gazal.
Here.
Tina Oberlin.
Present.
Marco Collet de Pietro.
Here.
Nate Albert.
Here.
And Tom Inman.
Here.
Okay, you have before you the minutes of the city council meeting held on March 4th, 2019. Motion would be in order?
So moved, second.
We have a motion by Alderwoman Scoler, second, and by Alderman Collet de Pietro for the minutes of the March 4th city council meeting. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Tom Inman.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verchey.
Yes.
Bob Scoler.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
And Marco Collet de Pietro.
Yes.
You also have before you the minutes of the work session held on March 11th, 2019. Motion would be in order?
I have a correction on that, please.
Page four.
The second page. It says Alderwoman Oberlin asked what school district would be affected by this. I was not the one that asked that. It was Alderwoman Gazal.
Motion would be in order with the correction.
There's another typo on page four. Police special assists should read assets.
Where yet?
Page four, two, three, four, five, sixth paragraph or fifth complete, first line.
Okay, right above public comment, correct? Paragraph where it says public comment. Got it, Jen?
Yes.
Okay. Motion would be in order with those two corrections?
So moved, second.
Motion by Alderwoman Oberlin, second, and by Alderman Inman. Questions or comments in regards to the motion? Roll call, please.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verchey.
Yes.
Bob Scoler.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Marco Collet de Pietro.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
And Tom Inman.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, moving on to our city administrator, Heather McGuire. Good evening, Heather.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have two agenda items for your consideration this evening. The first is an ordinance creating Title V, Chapter 5.74 of the City of Crest Hill Code of Ordinances to be entitled Registration of Defaulted Mortgage Property for two work sessions held on February 11th and February 25th. This would be a registration that requires any homes that are currently in foreclosure or bank-owned to register with the city. Give contact information so the city has a contact person for any property violations that do occur in the city. This would be going along with the next agenda item, and pro-champs would actually be handling the registration and submitting that information to the city. But the first component of that is to pass an ordinance. And just for clarification, as directed by city council at those work sessions, this will not include vacant or pre-foreclosure properties. And then, I'm sorry, I apologize. One more item. That fee will be $300 for the registration two times a year. And then the fee will be split off to pro-champs as detailed in that agreement next.
So moved, just presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderwoman Oberlin, second, and by Alderman Collet de Pietro for an ordinance creating Title V, Chapter 5.74 of the City of Crest Hill Code of Ordinances to be entitled Registration of Defaulted Mortgage Property. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Tom Inman.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verchey. Bob Scoler.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Marco Collet de Pietro.
Yes.
Motion carries, and it will be ordinance number 1802.
Thank you. And the second component of those two agenda items is the resolution authorizing execution of an agreement with property registration champions doing business as pro-champs. Pro-champs would handle the registration as detailed in the previous ordinance. That $300 fee would be collected by them. They would withhold $100 of that for their portion of the fee for doing the research on the properties. And then the remaining $200 would go to the city. That agreement is terminable within 30 days' notice by the city for any reason whatsoever.
So moved, second.
Motion by Alderman Dyke, second, and by Alderman Verchey, resolution authorizing execution of an agreement with property registration champions doing business as pro-champs. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Bob Scoler.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Marco Collet de Pietro.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Tom Inman.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verchey.
Yes.
Motion carries. It will be resolution number 1025.
Thank you. That was the final agenda item I have for approval this evening. The informational packet is on file, and just for the public's information, we will be holding a work session on March 25th. Current topics include budget work session number two that will include the department budget as well as the five-year plans and the Pasadena Avenue bid results for the water main project. I'd be happy to answer any questions this evening.
Questions of city administrator? Thank you, Heather. Moving on to Public Works Department, our director of Public Works, Mr. Tom Meggs. Good evening, Tom.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Nothing to report this evening beyond that which is included in the informational report? Or am I happy to answer any questions?
Not a question, but there was great snow yesterday. It came and it went within five hours. And I wish that we had, every snowfall, it looks pretty for that short amount of time, but it all goes away by nature.
It'd be a good thing.
Yes, it would be. Questions or comments of Public Works? All right. Thank you, Tom. Moving on to Community Development Department. Scott McMaster is not here this evening, so I'm going to turn it over to our city administrator, Heather McGuire, for those agenda items. Heather?
Thank you, Mayor. The first item is the final plat, final plat approval for Speedway. This was discussed at the February 25th work session. The only item that is being delineated on this plat is an easement granting the city an easement in case we do decide to install a multi-pedestrian path. So that is the only thing we are looking for approval on with this plat this evening.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderwoman Gazal, seconded by Alderwoman Scoler. Questions or comments in regards to the final plat approval for the new Speedway gas station? Roll call, please.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Marco Collet de Pietro.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Tom Inman.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verchey.
Yes.
Bob Scoler.
Yes.
And Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item is an ordinance amending ordinance number 1772 regarding a special use at 1607 Theodore Street. For the February 25th and March 11th work sessions, this ordinance will allow the owner of Crest Hill Auto Sales to amend the existing special use to permit up to 15 vehicles on the front triangular lot with a maximum of five vehicles permitted to be stored in the rear of the building. This would be an increase from the initial 10 that were granted with the special use permit.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderwoman Gazal, seconded by Alderman Inman to an amendment to ordinance number 1772. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Tom Inman.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verchey.
Yes.
Bob Scoler.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
No.
Marco Collet de Pietro.
No.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Motion carries. It'll be ordinance number 1803.
Thank you, Mayor, and that is all for the Community Development Department. If there are any questions for Scott McMaster, I'd be happy to take those this evening and pass them along to him or answer any that I can.
Okay, just a couple of comments in regards to the Speedway gas station. That is going to be at the northeast corner of Weber Road and Patrick Drive right by the White Oak Presto Library. They are scheduling, now that everything is in order, to be breaking ground next month in April. And also the old Giovann's Restaurant property, which has been demolished, is now under the ownership of Fuller's Car Wash. They are looking to break ground in April also as soon as the weather changes. So two new exciting additions to the City of Crest Hill with economic development along the Weber Road corridor. Any questions of economic development to Heather? Okay, thanks, Heather. Police Department, our police chief, Ed Clark, here this evening. Good evening, Ed.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I do not have anything on the agenda this evening. I just wanted to mention a couple of things. We had recently participated in the Polar Plunge for Special Olympics. It's part of many events that we engage in every year. I'm very proud of the department. They raised over $1,900 in this event. March 3rd and March 9th are the two dates. The officers on March 3rd kind of got the short end of the stick because they had to cut ice to get into the water. It was, they really went all out for that one, but very proud. It's a great event. We got cop on the rooftop coming up, and I'll be excited to get that one.
When's that?
That is May 17th.
At Dunkin' Donuts?
Five o'clock in the morning till noon, we'll be out, and we'll take as many donations as we can. It's a great, great organization. With that, I'll answer any questions.
At Dunkin' Donuts, though?
Yes, yes. Sorry about that.
Five to what time?
5:00 AM to noon.
Questions up to police chief? All right, thanks, Ed.
Thank you.
Moving on to the mayor's report. As I said at the opening of the meeting, we have several special guests. It's our privilege always to have young gentlemen from the Demolay Organization. So before we proceed with the presentations, I would certainly like to have city council read the proclamation because they are celebrating their 100th anniversary of the Order of Demolay. So we'll begin with the reading of the proclamation by Alderman Dyke.
A proclamation commemorating the 100th anniversary of the Order of Demolay. Whereas the Order of Demolay was chartered on April 1st, 1919, and is a character-building organization of young men from 12 to 21 years of age, and...
Whereas, under the membership of adults, these young men are taught to prepare themselves, become better citizens and better leaders for tomorrow through the use of their varied variety of self-directed, real-world applications and activities, and...
Whereas, the philosophies of Demolay are centered on the seven cardinal virtues of filial love, reverence, courtesy, comradeship, fidelity, cleanliness, patriotism, and...
Whereas, Demolay helps develop young men of character into good men of all ages, and by teaching leadership skills, civic awareness, responsibilities, and character development, and...
Whereas, the organization has carried out the aforementioned goals for 100 years through programs of athletic competition, social activity, civic service, and charitable projects, and...
Whereas, Demolay International is currently celebrating its centennial celebration, and will use this opportunity to advise citizens of their many activities and to recognize the millions of active and senior Demolay members throughout the world, and...
Whereas, the Order of Demolay has grown to 15,838 members and 647 chapters worldwide. And locally, the Swordsman chapter, number 14029 of the Order of Demolay, will observe 2019 as its 45th anniversary.
Now, therefore, I, Raymond R. Solomon, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Crest Hill, do hereby proclaim the month of March 2019 as Demolay Month in the City of Crest Hill in celebration of the 100th anniversary, and urge all citizens to join me in saluting the young men of the Order of Demolay and in expressing appreciation for the fine example set by them in contributing to the welfare of our community. Given under my hand and a corporate seal, the City of Crest Hill is 18th day of March 2019. Raymond R. Solomon, Mayor.
So moved, just presented.
Second.
A motion by Alderwoman Oberlin, seconded by Alderwoman Gazal. Questions or comments in regards to the motion for the proclamation? Roll call, please.
Marco Collet de Pietro.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Tom Inman.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verchey.
Yes.
Bob Scoler.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
And Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Well, congratulations, gentlemen, and to the adult mentors that are here this evening, because congratulations on 100 years as an organization. That's an incredible accomplishment for any organization. There's not many out there that can say that they've been around for 100 years. And all the good things that the Order of Demolay has done. It's amazing for me to stand here as the mayor for the last 10 years and see other individuals your age that are now 25, 26 years old, very productive citizens. You gentlemen have the same opportunity that they did when they were your age, sitting in these chairs before us. So congratulations to each and every one of you, because you gentlemen here today have made friendships for a lifetime. You guys will be together forever. You will never forget this time at your age. Even as you grow older, you get married, you have kids of your own. Hopefully, they'll be in the Demolay organization, just like you are in the Demolay organization. I understand that you can stay in the Demolay until you reach 18 years of age, and then you can go into the Masons. Or you can stay in the Demolay organization until you're age 21. And I know you're all looking at my tie, and probably a lot of people here are looking at my tie. I want you to know that this tie was a gift to me about five or six years ago by Mr. Sante DiSario, who was the leader of the organization at that time. And I've remained friends with Sante even to this day, as he went through high school and then Joliet Junior College. So I wear this tie whenever the Demolay Organization comes to the City of Crest Hill. And hopefully, all of you will have one one day. So, Demolay teaches you a lot of things for your life. It teaches you leadership skills. It teaches you social skills. I love the commercial on WJLL where you get to meet girls. I love that one. Listen to it. It builds character development, and each and every one of you teaches you responsibility, and it teaches you civic awareness. And that's why you're here tonight, is because of civic awareness. And you have given back to your community, the City of Crest Hill, in many ways, and I wrote down a few of them here. You've worked at many of our city picnics in August, and I know that the younger ones are there with the older mentors. And you're working with our police department, and you're fingerprinting young children that are three, four, five years old. In case anything bad happens to them, it's a lot easier for the police department to have those fingerprints on file. If they're missing, they can try to find them faster. And you guys are always there. Your group has been there for the last 10 years at our city picnic, helping to fingerprint young children. You've helped clean up the Levis Memorial in the past with us. Again, another tragedy that took place in 1942 under Hitler, where he wiped out an entire town, massacred all the women and children of the town, the village. He wanted to remove it from the world, but he didn't, because it's been rebuilt, and it's been rebuilt even better than what it was in 1942. And the City of Crest Hill has a memorial where we honor them. And there's only two memorials in the United States for that. One's in Crest Hill and the other one's in Phillips, Wisconsin. And you guys have helped us clean up that garden in the past, keep it beautified. So I thank you for that. I know you've had car washes here at City Hall property. You've come here and you've had car washes to raise money for your organization. So I want to, I want to certainly also thank the adult mentors that are here tonight. And you gentlemen should thank the adult mentors that are here also, because they play an important role. They are tremendous role models in your life, in addition to your parents and your grandparents. So you gentlemen sitting here tonight, the proclamation that was just read, you are living the Demolay proclamation that was read by all the work that you've done and the friendships you have formed, all the skills that you're, you're learning, and all the civic and community-minded things that you're doing also. I'm a firm believer that good things happen to good people. So if you do good things in your life, good things will happen to you, okay? And I certainly want to thank Angelo DiSario, who contacted me about two weeks ago and told me about the 100th anniversary here. And I want to thank him because he probably answered through emails about 15 or 20 of my questions to be able to put together the proclamation. And I know he can't be here tonight, but I'm sure if he was here, he'd want to come up here and he'd want to promote the Demolay Organization. And he wanted, he would want to take his time to let everybody know how great this organization is. But we don't have Angelo tonight, but we have his wife Carol that's here tonight. So not to put Carol on the spot, I'd like to invite her here. But first, before I do that, I certainly, on behalf of all of the residents of the City of Crest Hill, all 20,837 residents in the City of Crest Hill, it is my privilege and honor to give to you a copy of the proclamation that is just read on the 100th anniversary of the Demolay Organization. I hope that you accept this and you hang it proudly where you have the meetings, and always refer back to what's said in here. Because as I said, you are living the proclamation that I have in my hands. You live it, you pass it along to your children so they can live it too. And maybe one day, somebody will stand up here at this podium, and they'll celebrate the 150th and the 200th anniversary.
Thank you.
Now, Carol, do you want to talk first, or are we going to let, we're going to let Ryan Garcia speak?
I'll let Ryan go first.
We're going to let Ryan Garcia speak, because he is, he's the spokesman, and he's going to introduce everybody else that's here tonight.
First, I want to introduce everybody that's in my chapter. This is Xavier, Sammy, Nick, Calvin, and Kane. And I also want to say, my name is Ryan Garcia, and I'm Mass Counselor of Swordsman Chapter. Thank you for allowing us, allowing us to come here tonight to receive the proclamation from the City of Crest Hill. We greatly appreciate it. One of our principles is service. It has always been our pleasure to help out the City of Crest Hill, family picnic each year, and we would like to offer our assistance for this year as well. Thank you for always supporting our chapter. In turn, we will be continuing to support the City of Crest Hill after all. It is better than, it is better to give than receive, right? And I would also like to present you with a Demolay...
Hello. Thank you. To go with my tie.
Everything goes with that tie.
Everything goes with the tie.
Everything.
Well, thank you. Nice job. Anything else you'd like to say?
No, that is it.
That is it?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I apologize that Angelo could not be here. He had a previous commitment this evening. But I'm sure that he would be just as proud as I am of all the young men here. This is Ryan's first time that he actually had to get up in front of a group of people and speak that are not part of his lodge. So he was very nervous about today, but I think you did pretty good, Ryan. I just want to say thank you for allowing us to come here and receive the proclamation, as well as to sit in on the meeting. The young men here have meetings, just like you guys do, and it is very interesting that they have to have agendas. They start off their meetings with the Pledge of Allegiance. They start off their meetings with a roll call. And they have items that they need to discuss and vote on. So this was a very good experience for them to see that these things that we're teaching them in there come into play every day. I just want to thank you guys for your support of Swordsman Chapter, and we are always here if you guys need any help with anything. Thank you.
Thank you. And let, let me say that we, as a city, are very proud of the relationship that we have with the Order of Demolay. And we appreciate that relationship that we have. So let's keep it going for a long time. Fair enough? So any of the gentlemen, the other gentlemen, young gentlemen, would you like to come up and say anything? No? To the adult mentors. There are four of them in the audience tonight. If anyone would like to come up and say anything on behalf of the organization? What's that?
You pick the pro.
I will open it up to city council.
Well, I am looking forward to seeing you at the 10th Annual Picnic, the first Sunday in August. I know the chief always works it out with your organization, but I'm always happy to have you gentlemen there. It's a wonderful family day. And that's a great service that we provide for our residents, doing those DNA kits and filming those children, you know, God forbid anything happen. It's, it's, it's just wonderful information to have. So I thank you for your continued support of that, and I look forward to seeing you there again.
Mayor, I'd like to congratulate gentlemen for their accomplishment. 100 years, that, that's amazing. It really is. To give you an idea, before I came to Crest Hill, I was involved in a men's club down in the city of Chicago. It was the oldest registered club in the city of Chicago, and they were established in 1929, which means to this day, there are only 90. And that's out of the city of Chicago, so that gives you an idea of what an amazing situation that is. So congratulations on that, gentlemen, and for the adults, congratulations to you as well. I know it's a lot of hard work, but I also know that the rewards are much greater than the work you put in. There's no question about that. I spend a lot of my time with young people, and it's far more rewarding than it is now. So congratulations to all of you guys, and thanks for all you do.
Congratulations, guys. Keep up the good work. Thank you for all you do.
Congratulations. Thank you for everything you do for the city. Glad to see you guys get involved early. And are you doing anything special for the anniversary?
I'm actually...
A lot of peril. Give you a little more TV time.
We're actually going to go to Kansas City in July?
End of June.
End of June. And we're actually trying to get members in every month. And to keep up that, when we keep up that, we will actually, provided by the state, head, I guess you could say. We're actually, if we keep up the members, we will actually get a free trip to go down to Kansas City and go to Demolay International.
Congratulations. Good job to all of you, to the parents. And I see Xavier here. I've known him since a baby. I have to say that a lot. I'm proud to see you here. I'm really proud to see you here. You know, knowing you since you were a baby. You're always cute. You're still cute. And keep up the good job, Mom. You're doing a good job as a single parent.
He's still cute, isn't he?
He is.
Congratulations on the centennial.
His face matches his tie now. Congratulations to all you young fellows, and congratulations to parents for keeping them in that organization. Thank you.
I want to thank you, young men, for being involved in an organization like that. It's good to see young people getting involved in stuff like that. It's good for also all of our community to have you, be a part of it. So thanks again.
Xavier, anything you want to say to it? How about one more round of applause from everybody?
How about one more round of applause from everybody? Okay, that was the only agenda item. The only other comment that I have is I hope that everybody received their property tax rebate check last Thursday in the mail. Again, that was a promise that the City Council made back in 2012 with the sales tax referendum. So everybody should have received in the green envelope the property tax rebate check, which is 25% of the municipal portion of your property tax bill. If you did not receive it, please give us a call here at City Hall. You can dial 815-741-5123. And we will certainly try to track it down through the post office or through us. That is it for the mayor. If there's any questions, I'll certainly try to answer them. Hearing none, we will move on to our city clerks report. We have our deputy city clerk, Jan Sertar here this evening. Jan?
Hello, good evening. There is no agenda items for the clerk tonight unless anyone here has any questions.
Any questions of deputy city clerk? Alright, thanks Jan. City Treasurers report. Glenn Coughlin, good evening Glenn.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'd like to report regular overtime payroll from February 18th, 2019 through March 3rd of 2019 in the amount of $208,443.56. The only item I seek action on is I look for your approval on our list of bills, which totals 2,000, or excuse me, $291,372.43.
So moved is presented.
Second. Motion by Alderwoman Overland, seconded by Alderwoman Sclare. Questions or comments in regards to the list of bills? Roll call, please.
Marco Colletti Pietro?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Tom Inman?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Verche?
Yes.
Rob Sclaire?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
And Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you all. Answer any questions if I can.
Questions, Treasurer?
Thank you and good night.
Thanks, Glenn. Unfinished business. We have nothing on the agenda. Anybody? New business? Anyone? Committee liaison reports. Anybody? I will have one as the chairman of the Veterans and Police Memorial Group. We had a meeting last week. Our guest speaker this year, the ceremony will be held on Monday, May 27th at 2 o'clock right outside in the Veterans and Police Memorial Garden. Our guest speaker this year will be Mr. Anthony Cotella, who is a US Army veteran. And he also now serves as one of the honor guards at Abraham Lincoln Cemetery for the numerous burials that they have each and every day. We will also have the Frankfurt Brass Band here. We will have Lockport Township ROTC students under the direction of Mr. Andy Kinney, who will do a special flag folding presentation during the ceremony. We hope that it is not as hot as last year when it was about 108 degrees here. But you know, sometimes an hour's worth of sacrifice is, is not that bad. When you look at all the veterans that have passed away and our police officers that have passed away to secure the freedoms that we have today. So that's a small sacrifice on our parts to stand in heat that hot for an hour. So please join us. There'll be refreshments after the ceremony. We will also be having a work day out in the garden. And that is scheduled for Wednesday, May 8th at 9 o'clock in the morning. We will be getting the memorial garden ready for the ceremony and for the summer season here at City Hall. It is strictly a volunteer group. So if you'd like to volunteer some time for the veterans that have passed away and for our two slain police officers, please join us because we will accept any and all help that is available or that wants to work for a few hours to help beautify that garden for the summer season. Okay? Moving on to City Council comments. These are positive City Council comments. Anything you'd like to share with your constituents? Anybody like to go first tonight? We'll start with Alderman Dyke.
Just again, thanks to the Demole and its members.
Alderman Verche?
Same thing I was going to say. Congratulations on your 100 years. I hope you just go another 300, 400 years.
Alderwoman Sclare?
Congratulations again and I want to wish everyone a happy spring in a few days. It's been a long time coming.
Alderwoman Gazal?
No comment tonight.
Ward three, Alderwoman Overland?
Once again, great job, gentlemen. Keep it up. And thank you again to all the parents who we know are doing all the hard work in the background.
Alderman Colletti Pietro?
I'll just second what Tina had to say.
Ward four, Alderman Albert?
Again, congrats to you guys. Thank you for all you do. And just a quick announcement that Yardways Pickup begins April 1st again. Several people have asked me and I'm sure other, older people have gotten calls. So Yardways Pickup does resume in the city of Crest Hill on April 1st. Thanks.
Alderman Inman?
And once again, I'd just like to congratulate the gentlemen of Demole. You guys are the future of our city. And it's great to have you here. Thank you.
Okay, public comment. If any of our special guests or anyone else in the audience would like to address City Council, you need to step to the podium. You need to state your name for the record. Your address is optional. Let the record show that nobody has approached the podium. To our city administrator Heather, is there a need for an executive session?
Yes, sir, as mayor, under 2 seat 1 for personnel.
Motion would be in order?
So moved is presented.
Second.
Motion by Alderwoman Overland, seconded by Alderwoman Gazal for an executive session. Roll call, please.
Rob Sclaire?
Yes.
John Verche?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Tom Inman?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Marco Colletti Pietro?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
And Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Motion carries.
This should be very short, the executive session. We'll be going into executive session at 7:36 PM. A motion would be in order to resume.
So moved is presented.
City Council. Motion by Alderwoman Overland, seconded by Alderman Verche. Roll call, please.
Marco Colletti Pietro?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Tom Inman?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Verche?
Yes.
Rob Sclaire?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
And Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We're back in regular session at 7:49 PM. Heather, is there any action needed to be taken coming out of executive session?
No, there's not, Mayor.
Before we adjourn, I just want to say, gentlemen, we are very proud of all your accomplishments that you have had so far in your life. I know that you are going to have many more accomplishments for the rest of your lives. Remember, good things happen to good people. It's been a pleasure having you here tonight. Keep up the good work. Motion for an adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Dyke, seconded by Alderman Verche. Roll call, please.
Rob Sclaire?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Marco Colletti Pietro?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Tom Inman?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
And John Verche?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Meeting is adjourned at 7:50 PM. Thank you and good evening.
3 minutes, I know. Good job, too.